We'll call it speeding back to order. Next item on the agenda, assistance items, personnel, appendix G, Dr. Wellmers.
I think we did that.
Did we do that?
I think we did that.
Oh, I missed it, I'm sorry, I apologize, I didn't check it off.
You were running it.
Well, hey, I didn't check it off. All right, the next item's old business, revisions of 2017, 2018 Lake Forest calendar, appendix I, Dr. Smith.
Yes, I would ask for the board's approval to the change to the Lake Forest calendar. Lake Forest staff members are employed for 215 days, which is, excuse me, Lake Forest staff should have 215 days of employment, 15 of those days should be designated as extended employment. The current calendar only reflects 14 days of extended employment. What we are recommending is that we change the June 15th from a designated work day to an extended employment day.
I move that we accept the revisions of the Lake Forest calendar change.
I have a motion to hear second.
Second.
So have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item, high school redistricting timeline, appendix J, Mr. Anderson.
Bus drivers make up days and redistricting in the same meeting.
And I was sure this was gonna be a short meeting.
Not by me.
Yeah, you did, you said it's gonna be.
You said it's gonna be one of the longest short meetings there was.
Yeah, something like that.
Well, we'll try to keep this presentation short. Tonight, we are looking at high schools and high schools only. However, before we start, I do want to give you just a quick review of elementary and middle schools. So, just to, so everyone, you know, we confirm where we are with elementary and middle school redistricting. For those two guiding principles were approved by the board October 3rd. Timelines were approved by the board October 3rd. Revised middle school timeline was approved by the board December 19th. I've included, as part of the presentation, copies of the approved guidelines or guiding principles and the approved timelines for both elementary and middle school. Elementary school, you can see, plan, we will be developing and presenting a plan this year for elementary school. That plan would receive board approval December 2018 and then would be released to the public for information January 2019. Middle school, again, that plan would be developed this year. We're in the process of putting that together now. The plan development is January through April of 2018. The final plan would be approved by the board April 2018 and then released to the public that same month. So, just want to make sure that everyone understands where we are with the, with the elementary and middle schools. And like I said, I've got those timelines in your packet and I'm actually putting together a, kind of a calendar of when these, put all these timelines together in one calendar and show what the board dates are. So, I think it'd be easier to reference than three different documents. So, I will have that for you shortly. Now, looking at, looking at our high schools. Guiding principles, again, were approved by the board October 3rd. High school timeline approved by the board October 3rd. We presented revised timelines at the December meeting and the board has requested more information about our high schools. A lot of the discussion centered around whether we implement this coming year, the following year, and if we did either, we would, we would need to know what that plan looked like. So, we're actually presenting a draft proposal of that plan to you tonight. So, we'll be looking at that along with some options for implementation. So, let's talk about the options for implementation first. I tried to make this easy and I hope I did. To me, it made sense, if you're, there's really two options that we discussed in December. One was full implementation. Implement the entire plan in one year. The other was a phased approach where the full implementation would be a later year. Next year, we could look at a first phase or making some tweaks in some existing district lines. So, that is the phased implementation. Under full implementation, the discussion was, do we implement the full redistricting of high schools for the coming 2018-19 school year? Or do we, do we marry the timeline with our middle schools and have implementation for the 2019-20 school year? So, those are, those are the two options. Does that make sense? Are there any questions about, you know, the options that are presented for the different timelines? If not, then we'll take a look at the draft proposal. Again, this is for the full implementation. It's the same proposal whether it's implemented in 2019-20 or 2018-19. So, looking at the, at the maps, this is a current district map beside what is labeled as high school option one and it's the full implementation of the new high school districts. I like putting those two maps up there side by side because if you think about, we keep calling it redistricting, but it's really hard to identify where these changes are. And one of the things that we recognized going through this process is that we can balance our high schools without a major redistricting. So, there's an obvious difference where we're eliminating the satellites and making some minor shifts in district lines, but overall, there's not a drastic difference between the current district plan and the proposed plan.
I would just note that if you look at the two, go back with that first map, Eddie. You see the two downtown, the satellites. The Hogard satellite remains in Hogard, we expand the Hogard district to meet it out. The other one that currently goes to Ashley Wood is, goes to now to New Hanover. That's probably the most, the largest change you'll notice as we go through this.
Say that again, which, the second one.
You see the downtown where we currently have an Ashley district and a Hogard district within the New Hanover district? The current Hogard district, we're not, we're, we're expanding Hogard to meet that satellite, so that eliminates the satellite, and the Ashley satellite moves to, to New Hanover.
So, where is that in downtown? It looks like maybe north of, we'll get to.
We've got, we've got some closer maps coming up, but that's, that's the one dramatic change that, that most folks will notice when they look at this.
This is a, this is a summary, excuse me, where we are listing all the individual study areas that are affected by the change. We're listing them by school along with student counts. So, the total number of students moved in the, in the redistricting plan that's proposed is 685 students, which is 9% of our high school student population. I know that reading those numbers is difficult and as we were looking at the other map, it's difficult to read when it's so small. So, we're gonna go through each one of these moves individually. Mr. Wortman, this is the downtown Ashley study area, so this zooms in a little closer on exactly where that is, but.
That would be the pink area you're seeing on that.
So, this is the, this is the, the new, this would be the new version or the old version?
This would be the districts that are coming out to Ashley, or coming out to New Hanover, excuse me.
Okay.
The pink is.
So, this is, this is the, this is the current version?
It's a little bit of, it's a little bit of a.
It's a little bit, what we're doing is showing you what is being affected. The pink is currently in the Ashley district. The pink is the Ashley satellite. The areas that are highlighted in blue are the, are the study areas that would be reassigned from Ashley to New Hanover.
So, you still have a little bit of Ashley there?
No, they'll actually, they'll be moved to Hogard.
We'll, we'll pick those up in the, in the next slide. But, but that's, I'm glad you pointed that out because when you're looking at this, you know, this is, it's a map of the current plan and then we're highlighting the proposed change. So, that we're highlighting the study areas that are proposed to move from Ashley to New Hanover. And then to the left, we're listing the, the study areas individually and, and the students that are in those study areas. And that's consistent through each one.
Currently, 95 students then would switch out of this area.
Would switch out into Hanover?
Correct.
Okay.
So, the, the next, the next slide shows a study area. This is an area primarily between Market Street, College Road, and Gordon Road. These students are a total of 248 students. They're currently in the Laney district and they would move into the New Hanover district. The next slide shows, this is currently a New Hanover district that would be moving into Ashley. This area is along Carolina Beach Road. It extends the existing Ashley district up to Shipyard Boulevard affecting 100 students. And the next slide, this is a proposed change to expand the Hogard district. We would expand that district south along Carolina Beach Road and Masonboro Loop Road to pick up those study areas identified, total of 147 students.
Hang on, currently, which school?
They are currently in the Ashley district.
So, Echo Farms is in the Ashley district?
No, that's not Ashley.
Can you back it up to one slide so we can see it again?
Oh, you wanna go to?
No, that's not Echo Farms, it's in the Hanover district.
This, this is, this is the Hogard district moving south along College Road and Masonboro Loop Road.
I see Independence.
203 is Echo Farms.
203 is Echo Farms, okay.
This is Echo Farms area.
Those are the blue outlines are the ones that would be moved.
The, the ones with the blue outline.
From Ashford to Hogard.
Yes, sir.
And that's where you see the two little districts up in the corner there as well.
Makes sense.
No, that's right. I'm glad you pointed that out. Those are the two, two other districts that were in the Ashley satellite. They would be moving into, from Ashley into the Hogard district. The next slide, it looks like a big area, it's primarily the airport. There's currently 16 students in that area. This move helps us keep the Laney district contiguous and so we're proposing that this, these study areas be shifted from New Hanover to Laney.
Could you back up one, let me ask you a question on that. What is that? The one, oh, never mind, that blue line does go over to, to North College, I didn't see that.
Yes, sir.
So, the blue items we're voting on tonight, or is it information?
What we're asking, this is, the, the study area is, the redistricting plan is being presented for information. What we're asking approval for tonight are, is a timeline for implementing.
Okay.
What you're going to do tonight, you requested an option for the whole plan and a partial plan. So, if you decide to move forward, you need to let us know, are we gonna move forward with the partial plan or the whole plan? If you decide it's the whole plan, then we go to the public comment piece, we've got a work, we've got another work session scheduled in two weeks to form input. We'll put these online for input, but then at your February meeting, you would approve that plan with any changes that you make to the plan.
So, tonight, you need to know partial or full?
Partial, well, actually, no. We need to, first thing, are we gonna move students? Is number one. And then the second piece is, if we're going to move high school students, are we moving some or all?
Okay.
You really got, it's a two-step process.
And when?
Yes.
Three steps and when?
When?
And will this board be, have the opportunity of hearing from parents at a public forum?
Yeah, what, what we're going to do in terms of information, assuming you decide, let's say you, and we're getting a little ahead of ourselves, but assuming you say, okay, we're gonna move high school students, as soon as we can, these maps will go online with an opportunity for parents to make online comments. We'll also place a computer at each one of our four traditional high schools that parents, if they can't, if they don't want to go online or they don't have access, they can go to their school, look at the presentation online and provide comments directly at their school. We have a work session scheduled for two Tuesdays from now, which will, will have, which I would recommend that we allow public input at that work session for, in whatever format the board decides. So, you'll have different ways to provide input. You can do it online, you can go to the school to provide input, you can come to the meeting to provide input. We'll also get feedback from you at that work session about changes that you would like us to make to our recommendation. We'll incorporate those, put those back out after the work session, and then you'll have the voting on this at the, most likely at the February meeting. That's assuming that you get to step three. So, I'll let Eddie continue and then we'll, and I'll go back over that in detail again if I need to.
And one thing, originally, wasn't the recommendation from staff to do a partial, some tweaking?
Now, the original recommendation from.
In 19 and then wait the full thing when we did the middle school in 1920.
The actual original recommendation at the last meeting was to delay both high school and middle school. But we felt because of the situation with some of our schools that we needed to, we should do something. So, you asked us to come back with two pieces, the whole plan and a partial plan. So, we're, based on what we got at the last meeting, you're gonna get both of those tonight.
What is your recommendation?
My recommendation is gonna be, if you decide to move forward, and that's what you make, is either do it all or don't do it, is what I would tell the board. The partial plan that Eddie's gonna recommend, it's his recommendation, you'll see it there as well, is, it's a, it's a mini version of this plan. I would say either bite the whole apple or don't take a bite at all.
We'll go through the phased plan.
Until the 1920.
Correct.
We're gonna go through the phased plan, but, but as Dr. Markley said, it's, we're moving so few high school students that we don't think it really makes sense to do a phased plan. We think you should do a full implementation. The only question is, do you implement next year or the following year?
I agree, I don't think we should do redistricting in two years, back to back years.
And we didn't, you know, at the December meeting, we said we could look at that, we did, and, you know, that, that's what we found. We really, you'll, you'll see the numbers, we just don't think that that, that option makes sense.
I'm gonna ask at this point, if we let Mr. Anderson get to his whole proposal. If you have questions about specific slides, great, let's, we can talk about the after pieces of that once he's done his presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, but instead of getting specific, the only thing I was alluding to was that, and I agree as far as the movement, is that if you're gonna do middle schools, say 18, 19, and if you were waiting, if you're gonna do it over a two-year period, by doing it now and then waiting, I was just wondering about how many families would be impacted by having children in different, you know, at that middle or high school, two different schools where if you did it all at the same time, that wouldn't happen. Was the only reason I brought that up.
So, the next slide shows, this is currently a New Hanover district and we're proposing that these study areas be reassigned to Hogard. This is the area that Dr. Markley mentioned earlier that connects the existing Hogard district with the existing satellite, thus eliminating the satellite. There are currently 79 students in this study area. So, in, in, this is a summary, a summary slide, we've updated our building capacities. The, the top chart there shows how much we are over or under capacity in our buildings now, today versus after implementation. So, you can see that this plan does better balance our, our enrollment and, or projected enrollment, actually, for, for our, for major traditional high schools. We also took this plan and, and got free and reduced numbers so that you can see what the changes, what impact the changes would have on our free and reduced numbers at the school. Ashley, Hogard, and Laney stayed pretty, pretty much the same. New Hanover was increased some.
But I, but there's a caveat with New Hanover. New Hanover is a CES school. If you remember from child nutrition, that's a school where everybody in the school current, gets free and reduced lunch. So, we don't, that's one, we don't have as accurate a count of the actual free and reduced lunch number at that school because they're CES.
So, you don't believe that it's a 10% increase?
I don't think so. I think it's an increase, but I don't think it's a 10% increase. You're not allowed to use rates in terms of putting this together, but we did look at what the end result was and the demographics of the school don't change a whole lot at any of, at any of those schools. And that's some information I can bring back to you at, at our work session for, in more detail.
That would help.
But again, you're not allowed, that's not a factor that you can use in redistricting.
Right, but, you know, the percentage would help to find out more.
So, the, again, this is the full implementation. This is a draft proposal of, of what the, you know, what the high school redistricting would look like. It's the same proposal whether it's implemented next year or the year after. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through this, the phased implementation because if I hear everybody correctly, that, I mean, we, we would not recommend that, you've looked at it and you don't think that that would be the best course of action either. But I will share with you a couple of slides just to show what we did, because we had a lot, we had some discussion at the December board meeting and Mr. Wortman brought up, to do a phased approach, don't you need to know what the plan looks like? And he's correct. You know, we, we don't want to, to move students twice. So, really, in looking at a phased approach, we started with the end in mind and it's the same end result, but we looked at individually, individually what study areas could be moved first and then, you know, what study areas we would move in the second phase. So, these are the same slides that I showed you previously. I've just added a red dot on the, the study areas that, that we think you could move in the first phase. I want to show you, I want to get to the summary. I think that's the important piece. Summary in looking at the phased approach, for the, for next school year, it would be 23 study areas, 236 students. The following school year, the, the balance would be 29 study areas or 449 students. Still, the, the full plan, full implementation only affects 685 students, 9% of the high school population. So, since we're moving so few students, that is why we don't think the, the phased approach is the, is the best approach here.
A question.
Yes, sir.
The 685, is that if all the students that had, who had senior privilege went?
That does not include the seniors.
Okay, so, actually.
For the first year, that number would be less.
Okay, that's all I wanted.
Because we look, we, we did this based on current eighth grade to 11th grade student population. Those 11th graders would be seniors next year, so you, it would be really two years before you saw the full impact with those existing seniors.
But yeah, you're right, that does, that number does include the seniors.
And that becomes a question when you're looking at when to do this, because if it's gonna take two years for the full impact, delaying a year delays that impact for three years instead of two years.
Okay.
And then the option two summary, we're just looking at, you know, how do, how do the buildings over and under capacity fare in that first year versus the second year? And again, that second year is the same in the full, full implementation version. So, in summary, again, we, we presented it as two options. One is being full implementation. We would implement the high school redistricting in, in a single given school year. The second is the phased where we would implement high school redistricting over two years. Looking at the timelines, and I apologize, I've got these backwards, that is option 1B, which is the, 1B is implemented this current, this upcoming school year and 1A is the 1920 school year. But both of these timelines, the important thing to know, you know, the middle school timeline that the board approved in December, while implementation is for the 1920 school year, it doesn't mean we're waiting to present that plan. I mean, we're currently working on that plan and we're gonna be presenting that to you possibly this month, if not in February. So, if the implementation of the high schools were, was married with that timeline, again, we're gonna be presenting these right away. The, the thing that, to implement the high school plan for next school year, and, and we can do that, that's not, I mean, we can, we can make that happen, it just is going to limit the amount of time that the board and the public has for comment. Because we're gonna take about a, you know, three-month process, three or four-month process, and we're gonna have, we're gonna do it in about 45 days. So, it, we can do it and it's, that would be our recommendation, is that, you know, let's do the full implementation and we'll, we'll proceed with the direction of the board whether you want to implement next year or the following year.
What are the unintended or intended consequences we haven't talked about if we do what you just asked?
I think first, I'll let Dr. Holliday talk about the impact of student assignment.
Okay.
And how it impact, if, if, he starts, and what his student, his typical student assign, assignment schedule is.
Yes, we get our, as you know, we do our student assignment cards, student get those first week in March usually, and the whole process of open enrollment and appeals and all that goes through about April the 16th or so. And then we go through the appeals process and that lands us in June where you all did it, you know, where you all come together like you did, like you do every June and we do the appeals. So, in order to do this, we're probably gonna have to have a decision before that March time that we send out student assignments, because every student in New Hanover County schools will get a student assignment. Most students will get the same student assignment because they're living where they live. If there's anything that changed and they've got a completion of the school year or any other, they were there on a one-year hardship, they'll get another student assignment and then they get the opportunity during that time to appeal that assignment or to ask for another assignment. So, that's why, that's critical. So, that would be, if you waited beyond, Mr. Shell, if you waited beyond the March time that we send out student assignments, you're really not gonna be able to redistrict next year.
Dr. Holliday, if you wait, our March meeting obviously is the first Tuesday of the month, if you wait, if you delay it one week, is that a, is that a critical week?
We could push it back, we could push it back, but the statutory timelines, and Wayne can talk to you a little bit more about this, because he beats me up all the time about this. He doesn't, he does not cut me any slack. Y'all will need to work with him a little bit, help me out. But we have to give them a certain amount of time to appeal. In other words, they get their assignment, they get a certain number of days to appeal that.
Can we not just push the whole process?
Right, so, so we, yeah, and so, so a week is probably not gonna make a whole lot of difference, would you think, Wayne?
No, there really isn't a set deadline. They have 10 days to appeal.
It, but, but what it does is it messes up your process in getting it together, because what we do is a couple of things. When the student assignments go. When the student assignments go out, and then they also get to apply for open choice and all the choice options in the school system. If they don't get one of those, then they can apply for hardship. We screen all those hardships and try to apply the board policy and say yes to as many of those as we can based on board policy. And that would be Wayne and myself and Denise Angivine sitting there going through all of those. And then we send out letters again saying that their transfer due to hardship has been denied. At that point, they can appeal. So that, that process actually starts ticking from there.
And you're, and we're actually looking at a February approval of this.
Right, and that's what I was thinking. I was thinking that if you can delay it one week, um, allow us to vote on the, allow more public input, and then decide out, or, um...
February sixth is your current board meeting.
Right, and then it's March sixth.
So if you wanted to do a, a second meeting in February, on our regular workday schedule, which we, we hold, that would be...
Twentieth.
The twentieth. You could actually make the decision on the twentieth.
And that, that's actually the schedule that's proposed. And you'll see, it's, uh, in the twenty-eighteen-nineteen, uh, proposal, we're, we are, uh, you're allowing public input in, um, at the first meeting, and then the fa- the board would need to approve that at a work session.
Yeah, the other thing that I want the board to, 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 to understand and consider is the volume of applications that we get per year that have to be processed is astounding. I mean, we will, we will get somewhere upwards of eight hundred. Um, and, um, in some years, especially years where we redistrict, we're gonna get more.
Right, I understand. I'm not trying to shorten the time.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying that, that, that's a piece of it, getting, getting those processed in so that we can respond to them appropriately.
I'm just, I'm trying to keep your, your timeline the same.
With the February, with the February twentieth timeline, we can allow you time.
Yes, yes.
And that would give public input, computers, um, in the high schools, work session, consideration of public input.
You're looking at a January work session, which is really your, your public input session, as well as your input session, coming back with adjustments. Looks like at the February meeting, we make some adjustments based on the input we've gotten, and then do a final approval at the next meeting.
That would be in March.
No, it'd be the, we would take our second February meeting to approve the la- the final...
February twentieth.
Right, but, but now how about all the parental input, except for...
Parental input comes, parental input comes in a couple of ways. One is, you got access to technology you didn't have the last time you redistricted, so I think you need to use that. Uh, so we, online, and then we either put actual physical maps or a computer with the maps at schools, so they can go to the schools and see them there, offer their input. The Janu- the next January work session really becomes a public input session, and so the public can provide input. If you have input that you want us to take back and consider, we would. We'd come back with some revised maps at the first February meeting. That'll give you a chance to say, okay, those revisions match the input we got and our thoughts, and then you would approve them at the February twentieth meeting. So you've got a, a work session for input, online for input, the regular public comment period at the first February meeting, and then final approval at that, at that January twentieth meeting, I mean, February twentieth meeting, excuse me.
And when is the work session in January?
Twenty-third.
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 Sorry, that one's already on the schedule.
Dr. Markley, I was, in a lot of ways, I was remembering all of the, the general idea, but I have the exact timeline of the process, and, uh, student assignments just to go out this year, March the sixteenth.
So, so before, after the March meeting anyway. So if we needed to, we could actually bump, um, the, or bump the approval to...
What'd he say was the work session?
The March meeting, correct?
If you had to.
If we needed more time.
If you needed more time, but that would be the last absolute...
Right, right, right.
...to do it. And that would, I would assume by then it'd only be a minor change from whatever.
Right, right.
How many days in February?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-nine this year. No, twenty-eighth this year, it's not an election year, is it? Eighteen.
Eighteen's a leap year.
It's not a leap year. Twenty's a leap year. Sixteen-twenty.
Presidential election.
First twenty-eight days?
Twenty-eight.
And you can develop that for...
What work session?
Four thirty?
Say, do you have planning trips?
Not so much.
I'm not gonna be here for the February meeting, that's my annual conference in Washington, DC.
So I had a policy committee on the, Ms. Nichols on the twenty-third, four thirty to five thirty, so we have a work session at five thirty?
Yes.
I didn't have that down.
Whatever time it is.
Five thirty.
Okay. And when is our second meeting in February?
I believe the twentieth.
Twentieth. Twentieth. Just for information purposes, the meeting in March is on the sixth, if it needed to go to March, which he could still do if he...
Well, I, there's no problem with me being gone and for y'all to do a vote, I just wanted to let you know.
Fine, I think, yeah. I'm just simply saying that, yeah.
Right.
Twentieth, the...
If we get a ton of feedback that requires some adjustments, we can push it to, we can, we got the sixth as a backup date.
Right.
One question, uh, the, I know with the renovations that have occurred at, say, Hogard and, uh, at Ashley, I know you said the re- the overcrowding is not as bad.
One in March.
How, how, how bad would it be if we waited and did this at the same time we did the middle schools?
It does...
Well, the, um, you'd be, the, the process of developing is, is, is essentially the same. Uh, you would be developing and approving the plan about, around the same timeline. The, uh, but you would have one year more, um, of students. I don't think there's a big jump. You know, we're loo- you know, we're looking at implementation next year, we're looking at eight, nine, ten, eleven. Um, the following year we'd be looking at seven, eight. Um, you know, the, the big jump, uh, the big bubble is, is actually in, in elementary school, fifth grade going into sixth. So either way, you, you would be redistricting prior to that, so I don't think it's gonna make a big difference, capacity-wise.
I just knew it. At one time we were saying six hundred over at Laney, and now with the new thing, I think it was like three eighty-five.
Right. And, you know, a lot of that, um, the, the growth, um, you know, it's kinda flattened out, plus, um, you know, we've added six classrooms...
Get the additionals, yeah.
At Laney.
Mr. Anderson, just, just so I'm clear. You said balancing the high schools isn't a major, major issue. I think that's what you said in the beginning, because we're moving nine percent, but it's easy because we're not really, taking away a couple satellites, expanding Ashley a little bit, expanding Hogard a little bit, reducing Laney and, and Hanover. So it's not, it's, it's not as big of an issue as middle schools and elementary schools, I guess.
It's, I think he said it was, was it six percent?
Nine percent.
Nine percent. For that nine percent, it's, it's...
It is, absolutely, absolutely. But in terms of implementing it, is what I'm saying, there's no major, um, huge issues with implementing that, where, as opposed to some of the other redistricting that we made. Um, we've got the, we've figured out the dates for the public input, um, when to be considered by, uh, the board. Other than not doing it three years, uh, three out of four years, um, what are the, what are the issues, other than not doing it next year for the high schools, next year for the middle schools, until years later from the elementary schools?
Well, the, the big, the big issue that initiated us making this request was, uh, with the middle schools.
Right.
And, uh, and, and aligning the redistricting with our middle school renovations.
Right.
And, you know, and that's, that's been approved. Um, you know, our thinking at the time is that if you're gonna go through a redistricting effort, you know, let's put the high schools and middle schools together and, um, and go through that process, you know, a- at the same time. Do it once. Um, having looked at the high schools and, um, you know, what we would recommend, you know, I think it is, you know, relatively a minor change. You know, if you're looking at six-hundred-and-eighty-five students, you know, or nine percent of your high school's population, I definitely would not call that a, a major redistricting. So that's why we, uh, presented both options, both timelines. You know, I think you could redistrict, uh, or implement redistricting next year, or, um, you know, you, if you want more time for, for board input and public input, then you could, um, align it with the middle schools and redistrict the following year.
So we've addressed the major issue, obviously, middle school is the major issue with the construction going on in Roland Grace and Merle Grove. So those have been, we agreed in our last work session.
We've, we've taken care of that, and, and I will tell you that, you know, having, you know, started on the middle schools, I don't think we're gonna bring back, uh, we may be moving more students, but I still would not classify that as a major redistricting. I think we're gonna be able to make some shifts in existing district lines at the middle schools to better balance that student population, uh, as opposed to, like you were saying, the elementary schools.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's gonna be a little different.
Right.
So what is it you need from us tonight?
Okay. Last month you asked us to bring, but, bring back the options. So the first thing is, I, I'm assuming we decided not to move forward with a, a partial, so we don't need a motion on that. But what I need then from the board is a decision on this, on our, on this option, do we do it now, or do we wait and align it with the middle school? That's the, that's really the board's decision tonight.
Okay.
Because what we'll be doing, what... By saying, if you don't do a partial, then we would be doing the high schools in the eighteen-nineteen school year, the middle schools in the nineteen-twenty school year, and the elementary schools in the twenty-twenty-one school year.
No, you'd be doing, if you're doing a partial, you'd do high schools, uh...
Half of the high school this year and half of the next year.
Next year, and then the rest of the high schools the following year.
You'd be doing high schools twice?
Half and half. You do, I, I think we don't wanna do partial, because that's redistricting half of high schools next year and then half of the next year.
You wanna do redistricting...
Well, the six-hundred-and-eighty-five, is that a partial, or is that it?
That's the total.
That's what I'm talking about. That would be eighteen-nineteen.
Yes.
The six-eighty-five.
Yeah, well, no, but it's not, that's not a partial.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So we, it would be, that would be the eighteen-nineteen, would be that nine percent.
Either eighteen-nineteen, or you could do nineteen-twenty, and what they're talking about is picking one of those two to do the whole redistricting. If you wanna do it with the middle schools, you'll do it in eighteen-nineteen, I mean, no, nineteen-twenty.
Nineteen-twenty, right.
If you wanna go ahead and do the high schools, it'll be eighteen-nineteen.
Right, so regardless, we're gonna do the high school, that nine percent, whether it occurs eighteen-nineteen or nineteen-twenty, that's what we're looking at.
Yes, sir.
It brought, we need to just decide next year or the year after when we do the middle schools.
The only question to me would be, the idea is also kind of to get the middle schools a- associated with, I guess, the high schools to some extent as best we can, and whether or not you would have some kids who may end up at a middle school that is not associated with the high school, if we do them...
We do that anyway. We have elementary schools. Half of Alderman goes to Ha- Hogard, half of them goes to New Hanover, federal elementary schools.
Well, you've got, you've got four high schools, you've got eight middle schools. I mean, it's gonna split some.
So are you gonna pull the board?
Well, I would make a motion to, um, to implement the high school redistricting, I mean, based on our overcrowding situation and the need that we act. It's been overcrowded for six years, and in order to provide some reduced class sizes at Laney, um, and, you know, balance them out, I would make a motion that we implement the high school redistricting in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. I haven't heard any reason why not, um, to help these kids that have forty people in the classes, and I think it would help. So I'd make that motion.
All right, I have a motion. Go ahead, second.
Second.
All right, I have a second.
Okay, now, I wanna make sure I understand. You're talking about one redistricting?
Implement the entire high school for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen year.
Okay, so instead of...
No, one...
Right, okay.
Six-hundred-and-eighty-five kids.
I agree.
Six-hundred-and-eighty-five kids.
Which would then leave the middle school for the nineteen-twenty...
And then elementary...
Excuse, yes, nineteen-twenty, and then the elementary twenty-twenty-one.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, I, I do have one question. As things are today, and will be in mid-August of nineteen eighteen, can Hanover handle even taking out some senior privilege, nineteen-hundred-and-two students in its current facility?
I believe it's actually been much higher than that in the past with less space.
But they were going like two, and they were going two shifts. That's, that's my only question, is do we need to think about providing some alternative space someplace, even if it means renting, buying the old Coca-Cola plant, or renting the old Coca-Cola plant or something?
It's sold.
It's sold?
What I would say is, is if we do approve it, I think the next step is to tweak some of these things based on our public input. Is that correct, Dr. Markley?
Yeah, these...
So this is not a final plan we're approving?
I would always remind folks on, on redistricting, the first plan never looks like the last plan. This, well, we've come out...
We'll have a lot of change orders, so...
Change orders, that's...
This is a, this is really a starting point, and questions you can look at in the future process, now, I don't wanna get into these discussions tonight, is do we take enough out of Laney? Uh, do we need to look at more of those, or is that a question? Uh, are we putting, is New Hanover gonna be able to handle the numbers that we're looking at?
Well, and I'll, I'll tell you this, we, we, um, in the proposed draft...
Folks, Eddie's trying to answer the question.
I, I will say, I do, we do think that, um, we do think that New Hanover can handle the number of students that, that the plan shows. Um, we actually, uh, we purposely left that low. We could've moved more students out of Laney and into New Hanover, but because of River Lights and because of the, and, we anticipate the population of New Hanover is going to grow over the next five years, and, and we don't wanna recommend something to you today and be back in front of you in five years and recommend a change to that.
There's more construction in River Lights than you recognize.
I know, I know exactly.
Our conversation with the, our, our, Eddie and I met with the River Lights folks. You know that a certain percentage is gonna be fifty-five or older. They're talking about thirty-five-hundred homes before, when they're all said and done, but, and I think twenty percent's dedicated to fifty-five and over. Of the ones they've sold so far that are not fifty-five and over, twenty percent, they, they told, told us have school-aged children. Now, that's all the way up and down. So you will see growth in River Lights. It's not gonna be huge, fast growth, but that is growth that will, will come over time there.
And you're talking about the potentiality of about eight-hundred units at Echo Farms.
You've got Echo Farms, which is now going to, which is open up for development, that's another eight-hundred units. If you're getting twenty percent of those with school-aged children, that's another group that's, that's coming as well.
What's a maximum number for New Hanover that you could comfortably accommodate? I know we're nineteen oh-two, I think you said now? Is that right?
Well, there, the projected membership, um, less their backouts is seventeen sixty-one in this plan, which puts them seventy-three students over capacity.
Oh, okay, I'll check the wrong number.
This is a relative number.
Is that with the redistricting?
That's with, that's...
Seventeen-something would be what we're doing.
Correct, that's, that's...
That would move them from three A back what, to four A, I guess?
Well, the, the request...
You gotta wait three years for that.
Yeah, we got three more years to defend.
Okay, and I don't think you guys are gonna give back the trophy tonight, are you? Even because it was three instead of four A?
No, no. You don't know how much, how much grief I took over that.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions or discussion?
No.
Just remind your folks that where we start with these maps will not be where we end up.
I understand.
One more question, just 'cause I'm, I really don't wanna do it next year, but I don't, if we don't do it next year, if we wait to the middle school, that puts Laney what, three eighty-five next year, if, if we don't do this tweaking or this redistricting on the...
Uh, three fifty-eight, I think.
Laney this year, um, you know, is three ninety-five. Um, I would need to, I need to see what their projected enrollment increase, but I, I would not anticipate that going up that much more.
Right now they're three ninety-five though, compared to the six-hundred last year.
Uh, yeah, whatever that number was last year, I'm not sure, but it...
I can't hear in six-hundred, but also...
That's because we have a different, diff- um, more classroom space.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying, that's why the three-something, I mean, it's probably gone down because of that.
Well, the population hasn't gone down, I think the availability is.
There's, there's really two things, and I'm, I'm, we, we touched on this last time a little bit, but keep in mind too, that, um, the way, the way we calculate capacity. You know, we're, we're told by the state on how to calculate capacity. And, and the state increased the, uh, high school capacity per classroom because of the, they, their, their reasoning was an increased utilization of classroom space. Because our, our high schools today really don't function like high schools ten years ago. Um, we have students coming in and going out, we have seven AM classes, we have early release. Um, so the utilization of the classroom has increased. Um, so there's really two things that, that, um, you know, affected that. We increased the numbers of classrooms by six and we increased the number of students per classroom, you know, per the state in, in our capacity calculation. So it's those two things together that, uh, that increased the number of stu- or, or the building capacity at Laney. The number of students didn't drop and we don't expect it, it's going to drop next year. We expect it will stay pretty, pretty constant. So if there's, if we're showing three hundred and ninety-five students, um, over capacity currently, uh, we think next year probably be a little more, but not significantly more.
The six hundred could still be there, but due to the increased number of classrooms and the increased class size, it makes it appear.
It can handle more.
Yeah, that they're not as much, okay.
Okay.
We didn't lose students. I want to make sure you didn't, you know, I didn't mislead you. We di- we didn't lose students. They're still there.
All right, I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the motion is to re-go forward with a work session on the twentieth.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, I mean, thank you, I'm sorry.
Now, the motion is to, is to redistrict in the eighteen nineteen school year.
High school.
Okay, but that, but that, that means, uh, okay, well, whatever, all right, I figured we needed.
Option two.
Option one.
Option one.
Oh, well, get back to one on the screen if you will, please.
Option one, eighteen nineteen.
Aye.
Okay. I'm calling the question.
Okay.
All those in favor, six to five are saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Okay, now let me review the timeline for you. And the public input piece. So, because you've approved this now, we will have a work session in January on the twenty-third. I will get with the chair to talk about the format of that, but we need to structure that so that there is an opportunity for public, for extended public input.
Have any idea what time we want to do this thing?
You said five thirty.
We scheduled it at five thirty later so that if there are some folks who work, they could come.
I just want to be sure, I want to put a policy from four thirty to five thirty.
Correct.
Okay.
At, at that point, we'll hear input from the public, we'll hear input from board members on their thoughts as well for recommended changes. I will incorporate the bo- the final set into a, an updated proposal to the board at the February meeting. And so then we'll review those changes in February, at the February sixth meeting, and then come back for a final approval on February twentieth. If for some reason the board feels like they, they need a little extra time, we can postpone that to the March meeting.
Right.
All right, Don, how quickly can we get maps online? So no later than Friday we'll have maps online. I'm thinking at the high schools, we'll put large paper maps so that folks can walk in and look at the cha- proposed, uh, neighborhood, the, the changes with a paper comment box or a computer comment box.
You mean at, at the schools?
At the, at the four traditional schools.
Okay.
That will probably.
The format, if, if we can make a, a computer available.
That would be the preferred method.
Because the way we're, we're, um, hoping to put this online is that you can enter your address in the current plan and you can enter your address in the proposed plan. So that there's no question, you know, based on where you live, you know, what school you would be assigned to in either, in either plan.
And it may take, that may take a little longer than Friday to get up and running at the schools.
Can you also send it to all of the, I mean, one of the things we always hear in these redistrict, in, in these appeal hearings is, well, my real estate agent told me this, my real estate. Is there any way to send it to the, the major real, realty agencies?
I think you can send it probably to the, um, Wilmington.
Board of Realtors.
Board of Realtors, yeah.
We'll, we'll send some kind of notifications to Board of Realtors.
And they'll send, blast out.
Yeah, cause I, I think that, that's what we always hear, so that, that's not.
And I'm sure you've, I'm sure you as board members, if you thought your phones, we're busy now, they're going to get a whole lot bitter, bit, busier. Ed, who's never gotten a call in seven years, will get his first set of calls this year.
That's because he doesn't answer the phone if he doesn't recognize the number.
I do if it's a human being, I do not answer if it's unknown.
Dr. Markley, um, would we be able to utilize the libraries?
Excellent, yeah, I will, uh, any place that we can, we, we think we, additional spots that we can put it in, we, we will do that.
We've, we've helped with the students being able to use it so the parents aren't to be able to go in and access.
All right, so we will try to have our online stuff up by Friday, we'll try to have our school si- sites up by next week.
Okay.
Is there, um, last question, is there no way to, um, with a lot of these schools, emails or text messages, is there not something we can send out to them to?
Once it's up and, once it's live, we can send out a, the maps are online, if you wish to look at them, here's the website.
And make sure the p- the principals also announce it so that the students know.
Okay.
All right, is that it on that?
That's it.
Okay.
Nice job, Eddie.
New business, modular units for middle school renovation and associated budget transfer, Mr. Anderson.
Welcome back.
I won't even sit down. I, uh, um, as you may recall, this is, um, this is, uh, something that we mentioned at the December meeting. That we were looking at, um, modular units and, uh, and how best to utilize them in our middle school renovations. And, um, the idea was to do a combination of leasing, uh, some units and purchasing some units. So that in the end, we want Roland Grice to have an eight classroom modular building that will stay at Roland Grice and replace the six older units that are currently there. They'll be removed. And then we will also have a six classroom modular building and a four classroom modular building that we could, we could then move to another site within our district. Because we, we know that whether it's a middle school or a high school, you know, we, we, that's, that's where the, uh, that's where the need is going to occur in that timeframe. So we have been, uh, putting that plan together and, um, and at the same time, looking at our, our bond projects. Um, the budget transfer, um, moves approximately, and these are round numbers, approximately eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, into the middle school renovations for the, uh, purchase of modular, uh, buildings. And it also moves, uh, about one point five million dollars in, in savings into our program, um, contingency. That's not right.
I move that we adopt the modular units for middle school renovations and associated budget transfer.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second, any further discussion or question?
I do have one question. You said we're going to replace the current units at Roland Grice, what are we going to do with the old units?
Um, they'll be sold on site or torn down.
Okay.
These are some of the old, correct me if I'm wrong, Eddie, these are some of the oldest ones who've got the district.
They've been there a while.
I was just curious, thank you.
We might use one as a construction trailer for a while.
I have a question about the design for the HVAC at Johnson and Bradley Creek. One is five hundred dollars, one is two thousand, aren't they basically the same school plan?
Well, these are the, these are, this is savings. So, you know, for some, for, for some reason, in, in the design budget code, which is five twenty-six, at Bradley Creek, we had two thousand dollars left in savings after the project was completed. And at Johnson in five twenty-six, we had five hundred. Um, so, you know.
But their expenses seem to be the same, so.
Well, their expenses were. I'm sure their expenses were very, very similar, if not the, exactly the same, because like you said, they're the same design and the same mechanical system.
Got a better deal at Johnson.
This is the amount of money that was remaining. You know, throughout the project, we, we may transfer money between object codes. So it, it, whether it's in five, five twenty-two or five twenty-six, we, we, um, will transfer money between object codes based on the use of those funds. Uh, we don't transfer money outside of a project, uh, without coming to you for your approval.
Okay.
And that's what we're doing tonight. The, this would, it basically, uh, scoops up savings on the completed bond projects, uh, moves a portion of those savings to, uh, the middle school renovations for modular buildings. And, uh, and I gave you the wrong number, I want to tell you, it was eight, about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars into our program contingency. Which, uh, which brings our program contingency, uh, up to two point three million dollars. So we, and knowing that we still have several large projects to bid, um, we want to be very conservative in, uh, with our program contingency.
Thank you. We're ready.
Any other questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, six to five are saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item on the agenda, correspondence, anybody want to share any correspondence? Hearing none?
Yeah, I, I might, um. The Parks Advisory Board was approached, um, with, there's a piece of property on Carolina Beach Road. And it's not school related, but it's, um, Battle Park. And there's been a lot of discussion over the last ten years about that property. Don shaking his head, he's got some scar tissue over there. And, uh, I don't know that it'll come back, but I thought this board ought to have a heads up that it could. Um, uh, so it's out there, um, the, uh, county commissioners will have to make a decision on what to do about that. But, uh, that was an item that was out there. I don't know that it'll have any school ramifications, but I put it out there just FYI, nothing for you to act on.
So it's like, they're talking about selling it, is that what you're saying?
Well, initially when the commissioners, uh, purchased.
It was bought as a park or as a, uh, fire station and all that kind of stuff, but what are they talking about doing with it now?
They're tou- they're talking about turning it into a passive park.
Oh, okay.
And, and, uh, the neighbors, it's a whole new group of neighbors and they want to escalate that, uh, beyond what's been done in the past. County commissioners talked about selling it at one point and, uh, the neighborhood, uh, outcry.
It's what, about forty acres?
Forty-two, I think.
Huh?
Yes, forty's about right.
So that's not, if the, if the county commissioners go forward with this passive park, we're not looking at a hundred and eighty new units sitting on it.
No. No, you'd say a passive park, but, uh, they got, they would, there would have to be some funding for it.
I understand, but it, it would be a park, it would, and it would stay a park.
At one time they were talking about, what, a fire station, library, RV park, you know, selling it for that. Allowing us to build an elementary school, you know, if need be, so it's over the years, it's been.
I, I'm not sure we, we're in need of it now. I don't know, I have superintendent, but.
We'd have to look at the land, see what, see how much of it's usable, not usable, as opposed to wetland, not wetlands, because I think that's been an issue with Battle Park is the usability of some of the space.
I've actually looked at it in, in the past and, uh. It's because of the, it's, it's, it's very linear, um, and it's.
It's a sand hill.
And it's right on, um, right on Carolina Beach Road. It, um, in grass and egress is very difficult and, um, we didn't think it was very conducive for a, a school site.
The terrain wise, I would think it would be sort of like Mary C. Williams, it's a lot of sand and stuff.
It's, it's a sand pit.
Ain't nothing called a sand pit, you live in a sand.
I know, but there's not a flood zone.
You live on a sand pit now.
Is there any, any water on this, is there any wet zone on the area?
No.
What, what was the question?
Is there any area that's considered wet that you can't do anything with?
Well, there, it, some of it can be used, it, there's a wetlands delineation map and, um, but, um, you know, it'll be an argument, a strong argument if the county decided to do anything. But when the county and the school system bought Veterans Park, it took away the desire to develop that as a park.
By the, by the way, uh, I don't know who would answer this question. Isn't it about time for the county to deed us Veterans Park or the school section? I thought it was for twenty years, hadn't it been twenty years?
I don't think so.
It's getting close. It's what? Two thousand and one from when they bought it?
So it'd be two thousand twenty-one.
All right, well, we're getting close, we're getting close. All right.
Actually, we're getting, getting close, the next thing we're getting close to is, is talking about the next bond.
Well, we'll talk about that another time.
Okay.
All right, anybody else have any correspondence they want to share? Uh, announcements, uh, of course, we've talked about, uh, on your sheet, it talks about there's a board meeting on February the sixth at five thirty. But we also have a work session on February, uh, January twenty-third at five thirty. Uh, we're going to have another work session on February the twentieth at five thirty.
And we have a policy committee on the twenty-third.
Okay.
Of January.
All right.
The February twenty-third session?
No, January twenty-third, February twentieth.
I don't know, you said about February?
February twenty.
Okay, the work session.
That's the second work session. Okay, anything else?
You need a motion to go into closed session?
I need a motion going closed session.
We're going to close session pursuant to dash, North Carolina General Statute is one four three dash three one eight dot one one parenthesis, A parenthesis, one parenthesis, three.
We will not, there'll be no action coming out of closed session, it's a very brief, uh, answer to a legal question.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, six to five are saying aye.
Aye.
We are now in closed session.